Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. It is August 26, 2025, and the time is 7:02. Please silence your cell phones if you have them with you. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Trustee Hike.
Here.
Trustee Rice. Trustee Rosenhour.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Scrum.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Great, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge is allegiance, citizen of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united in God, equal and equal. With liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. Trustees, you have before you an agenda for tonight's meeting. I've just been told that there actually are a couple of public hearings as part of this. Item B for short-term rentals will be a public hearing. And item D for healing centers will be a public hearing. So you might want to take note of that. And I'd like to propose that as a change in the agenda. Does anyone else have comments or changes? And I thought I'd like a motion to approve the agenda with those two modifications.
Second.
You have Rowe and Hike, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And then we have the consent agenda, which in your packet, it has lots of information. Minutes of meetings and reports from department heads. Also, there is a resolution in regard to the enforcement school partnership program, the police officers in the schools. And then there's also a resolution appointing Lisa Field as an alternate voting member of Planning and Zoning Commission. And a resolution appointing John Dugan as a regular voting member of the Water Advisory Board. Does anyone have any items from the consent agenda that they have questions or concerns about, such that you'd like to pull anything out for a business item? And if no one has any other changes, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have Hike and Swisher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, now we have public comment. So, you know, we have a busy agenda tonight. So we have the comprehensive plan, and then we'll have a public hearing in regard to short-term rentals. We'll have an introduction to the budget and its process. And we'll have a public hearing in regard to healing centers. So if anyone would like to speak at public comment, they need to sign this clipboard. If you're going to speak as part of one of the public hearings, then you won't speak now as part of the public comment. Is there anybody who would like to sign in on the clipboard who hasn't? Okay, so we'll go ahead with public comment. So we have John Byer. Please give your name and whether you live within the town of Buena Vista.
Good evening, Mayor Fay, fellow trustees, John Byer. I'm the new chief executive officer of Sangre de Cristo Electric. I live in the resident, a new resident, as of July 11th at the town of Buena Vista. And so I had this opportunity to meet some of you, not all of you, but I just wanted to stop by, introduce myself. At Sangre de Cristo, we're focused on the promise of service, safe, affordable, reliable, and a responsible manner. And so I look forward to working with all of you in the coming months and years. And like I said, just wanted to stop by, introduce myself, so you have a name with a face. And again, look forward to working with each of you, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mark Krausnow.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Mark Krausnow, I live in the inside Buena Vista. Couple of things I want to talk about tonight. First of all, just wanted to say that after recently completing a major construction project that involved us working with four different town planners and probably three or four additional town planning staff, we want to share that we feel, my wife and I feel, that this is the best planning department right now that we've worked with and seen that since we've been here. Marika went above and beyond to expedite the final inspections and paperwork to get us across the finish line. Jamie and Ally have been great to work with as well. And I just want to encourage the town leadership to keep this team together as we move forward. Next thing is contraflow bike lanes. And there's been a lot of talk lately about bike lanes. I feel like there's an inappropriate and dangerous use of these contraflow bike lanes in town. According to CDOT, bicycling manual, bikers are to ride with the flow of traffic unless you're in a designated contraflow bike lane. Contraflow bike lane is an area of the roadway designated to allow bicyclists to travel in the opposite direction of travel on a roadway that restricts vehicle travel to one direction. So that's one-way roads. So Rodeo Road and County Route 313 are very busy roads. And I feel like neither ones are one-way road, and so I feel like they're very dangerous. It also seems that there's, that bike lane on both those roads is so wide, you could put half of it on the other side of the road and solve the problem. Arizona Road has what I call the bike lane to nowhere. It's only 1,200 feet long, it's on one side of the road. It's also a contraflow bike lane, but it's half the width of the other one. So it's even more dangerous, and that's a very busy section of road as well. The, I would really encourage town to, you know, there seems to be along that stretch of Arizona down to Marquette, there's plenty of room on the shoulders to build an additional bike lane. I would encourage you guys to just put forth the funds to finish that bridge across Cotwood Creek. I know that the previous property owners already donated the land for that. Next thing, thumbs up on the pocket wave. I think that that project's going to bring a lot of tourism to BB and pay for itself many times over. The short-term rental, I know, is on your agenda tonight. The license, you know, I've been a realtor and property, and a short-term property owner for 10 years, so I do stay up with the codes in county and Salida. And I feel like BB's got a really nice policy. I really like the percentage cap. I feel like the way it grows each year, we're adding a lot of houses to the inventory. I think, I think it's working. I like it. I think that the fact that we current waitlist is only four out-of-county licenses, and there's 40 available for locals, shows that it is working. I think it could work better if the percentage cap were like, so myself, our short-term rentals are in LLC. The Krausnow LLC is registered at my home address, but I am an entity, so we are counted in the out-of-county kind of bucket. And I don't believe that was the intention when it was created. Again, there's 40 for locals available. I think there would be less on the waiting list if, you know, locals or myself. I know it's not always easy to, you know, figure out exactly where they're registered, but a lot of times it is. The no parking signs along the boulders. I feel like, you know, hopefully that's not going to happen again. That's a very crowded area, you know, they've only got, they're all three-bedroom plus an ADU, and there's only two parking spaces. Am I done?
Just about.
Okay, great job on the comp plan. I thought it was really good. I thought, you know, it turned out well. I thought the engagement process went well, so nice job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And now we have another mark.
Yeah, it's Mark Wilburn. I live in Buena Vista, been here my entire life. So I run a property management company. I presented the board with a letter stating all the percentages and stuff and my opinions on stuff. And I agree with Mark Krausnow. Buena Vista has one of the best restrictions that we have with the cap and the 6% because it gives locals an ability to do their own short-term rental businesses if they want to. And it also keeps a nice flow of new properties hitting the market every couple, every year with the cap being where it's at. So, and I think, I'm not against restrictions. I think restrictions are great, but I think we need to probably keep them where they're at. Restricting things more is going to help anything, especially our tourism. So, and I presented all those numbers in that packet. And I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. And now we were going to... Oh, is it someone online?
Yeah, Tony Legreca, is his hand raised?
Tony, would you like to speak at public comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Tony Legreca, 589 East Arkansas Street. And I am also a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Water Advisory Board. And I just got back from a very muddy fieldwork session, and I don't feel quite presentable to the town council at this point. So I'm zooming in, and I just wanted to say, the master plan, the comp plan documents in front of you represent a whole lot of work. Some of you were involved in the steering committee. I know there have been work sessions with trustees. There have been work sessions with planning and zoning, the Water Advisory Board. It's a great document. We had a lot of public input and a lot of fantastic work by the staff. So I just want to, I just want to endorse it from my perspective as a citizen and as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else out there?
No other injuries.
Okay. And that concludes public comment. So now we'll go on to talk about the comprehensive plan. Is this new, Marika?
This is me and Gabby. Perfect. All right, so before you this evening, Madam Mayor, trustees, I am so pleased to present to you the final draft of the comprehensive plan. Of course, there's an opportunity if there's continued comment and discussion tonight. When I say final plan, we can continue to edit it if the board so chooses. But this draft has gone through, I think this is maybe the fourth or fifth iteration at this point. And as Tony suggested, we've had a ton of public engagement. There's always room for improvement. I mean, if it was my dream process, I'd get to be able to talk to folks every single day and meet folks where they were at. But I really think we tried to make a really strong concerted effort in the last couple of months to do exactly just that and go out and talk to folks at events that were already happening in town. We had the process posted on the MyBB webpage, as well as obviously continued comment and kind of that shared advisory board level. Our amazing steering committee, which we have several members in the audience this evening that were involved in the process since even before I joined in January. And I shared this at P&amp;Z, but I'm just incredibly humbled. I think, you know, I'm so excited to be a part of a community that wants to be engaged, and I say that so genuinely because I can tell you, I've worked in places where it's like an echo chamber, and you feel like, I hope I'm making the right decisions. And so at the end of the day, the work that we do in the planning department should reflect the needs and the wishes of our community. I think we're at a pretty pivotal point, and we get to choose how we grow. Are we going to become bail? Are we going to become the front range? Are we going to become something that makes sense for BB? And I think we heard from the community loud and clear in this process on the things that they wanted to continue to celebrate and improve. There was a large focus on affordable housing, transportation, and connectivity and water, of course. Those are kind of our major, huge themes throughout the plan. But we've got several chapters, which I know Gabby will go into in more detail. But I am here really just to express my excitement, my deep appreciation, and to hear any feedback that the board may continue to have. But at this point, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to our amazing consultant, Gabby with SC Group.
Hi, everyone. Make sure I can see. Did you have the presentation out? So the presentation tonight really just gives an overview of the whole process, as well as an outline of the product. I hope that most of you at least skimmed it to some degree so that you know what you're voting on. So we're going to go over that tonight, so next slide. So the process, you should be familiar with at least parts of this. But about, back in June of last year, so about 15 months ago, we had a big kickoff open house, initial conversations with lots of different stakeholders. You know, differently, we talked with Historic Preservation Committee. We talked with developers. We talked with folks involved with water. We basically kind of talked to eight to 10 different groups while we were here for that open house and visit. And then we started to dive into an inventory and analysis phase. So we wrote these basically background research memos on all the different topics and started to just understand what the issues were, from housing to connectivity, to historic preservation, to, you know, community and culture. And that's when those three major themes that Marika mentioned started to emerge. The transportation connectivity piece, the affordable housing piece, and then the water pieces, the main three topics of the plan. Even though we do cover all different areas of planning, those were the three that were kind of highlighted as the most urgent, the most important, and the ones that needed the most attention and action. And then in this spring, when Marika came on board, we did a round of additional engagement. There was a survey along with an in-person event option that really just made sure that the initial recommendations that we had in the very, very early draft were headed in the right direction. And so we kind of got, you know, the sniff test of like, yay, these are great, or oh, I think this one needs a little bit of work, you know, at that March engagement opportunity. And we had really good turnout on the survey. I'm trying to remember how many, was it like 600 something participants in the survey? And then we basically have spent the last six months or so in draft planning mode. And so we've created three or four different drafts. It's gone to the Planning Commission. They chose to continue it as we made one more round of revisions. Then the Planning Commission recommended it for approval. We've made a couple smaller revisions since then. And so that next version, hopefully the final version, is before you tonight in tonight's packet. The last piece is that we did have a public comment period earlier in the summer. Before, was that before the public, before the Planning Commission? Or was it between Planning Commission and?
Between.
Between Planning Commission and, okay.
Mid-year, mid-year session, yeah.
Yep. There, we got some public, additional public comment during that period, and we incorporated, we basically created a summary of those comments for the second Planning Commission meeting because they wanted to see, you know, at least a sense of what those comments and edits were. And then they adopted it, you know, after reviewing those comments and another round of revisions, or they recommended it for adoption. So this is just acknowledgement of all the people that contributed. We had a lot of different staff members, the consultant team. It was three or four folks from SC Group. We also had a couple of sub consultants that specialized in specific pieces. We had Studio Seed that worked on some community character and those transportation recommendations for West Main. We had Michael Baker International helping us with some of the water and hazard mitigation, natural resource planning. And then we had Michael Yurman helping us with some of the affordable housing planning. So it was really a team effort. And then we had an amazing steering committee, which we have a couple members here tonight. So thanks for coming to show your support. And then, of course, we couldn't do this without the review and direction of the Planning Commission and then this body, the Board of Trustees. So trying to, I want to tell people that my job is cat herding. You're trying to take, you know, 50, 60, and then 600 opinions and boil it into one document. It's a very messy, messy process. Okay, keep scrolling, please. So again, we heard, these are, this is just a chart showing some of the key values that we heard. We had a bunch of over 500 folks participate in the open house and the survey. Most of, I would say over half of them are full-time residents. It's too small for me to read what it says there from where I am. But some of these charts and graphics, we also tried to integrate infographics and different data points throughout the plan. So there's like these little snapshot graphics in each chapter, which show kind of some statistics about where you're at in terms of recreation or housing affordability or different topics. And of course, the second we adopt it, it's going to be outdated, and those data will change next year. But at least it gives you both, you know, a snapshot of time, and then also this long-range vision for hopefully the next 10 years. So we did, you know, during our analysis phase, we heard that these were the major challenges and threats, were the combination of a lack of affordable housing with the high cost of living, not knowing how much water there was or water scarcity, and how that affects growth and development and water availability. And we asked this one question, I think at the March open house. What, it was something along the lines of, is Buena Vista growing, you know, too fast, just right? Or, you know, not enough, bring it on, or something like that. And I would say the gravity of those answers were kind of in between the just right and a little too fast. So I think there's just this case of change worry. At the same time, you know, we did this little side project that was helpful in understanding land use and housing. It didn't end up making it into the plan, but we were doing a side project. We were calling it the housing pipeline, where we were trying to just understand all of the housing developments, you know, both within the municipality, municipal borders, and one to three to five miles, you know, in the region of like all the things that were coming so we could get a sense of future service needs, you know. If all those developments come to pass in the next three to five years, you know, what is, who are you planning for? What is that population that are going to, even if they don't live within the town boundary? They're going to call Buena Vista home. They're going to be shopping at the grocery store. They're going to be sending their kids to schools. They're going to be using the parks and the trails. And so we did that exercise to really understand what that growth pipeline was. And I think it's, I can't remember the exact statistics, so Marika, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's something like, it's been, it's like permitted more, more developments permitted in the next year than like the last five or six years combined, or something like that. So there's a lot, there's a lot happening, and I think this is a perfect time to have a comprehensive plan to show what your vision and values are as all of these new projects come about. Yeah, so I kind of talked about that in that first bullet, go if it's occurring a little bit too fast. In our economic chapter, we talk about wanting more healthcare services, childcare, elder care, entertainment, and recreation industries, so kind of supporting the lives and the growth of people that are going to be living here and making sure they have high quality of life. So we saw growth areas in those potential job markets. And then on the connectivity side, we kept on hearing over and over again was, it's not safe to cross the highway. I can't get from here to here without getting in my car. It seems silly to drive a mile to get to the park when I can perfectly easily walk there, but I can't because this section of road is too, is too dangerous. Or I wish my kids could just bike to school on their own, but I don't feel safe for them doing it. Or, you know, versions of that came up again and again. And so we really focused on pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure improvements. And then we talked a lot about the development type. So the type of development type that's desired, so age and place, single-family homes, and other multifamily developments that fit within the character of the community. And then the last point here is kind of about the water, water-saving piece. Okay, let's keep moving, so I want you guys to have time to discuss this. So at the last couple of ones, this was mostly the staff, but after the draft plan was released, Marika and her team went on a little road show and went to different concerts and farmers' markets and other events to really tell people what the plan was all about and get a sense of, does this make sense to you? Does this future land use map, you understand what this means? Like, you don't even know what a comprehensive plan is? Like, what does this mean for you when you think about these things? And so they summarized that feedback for us, and we incorporated some of those comments into the final draft. And there's a going to be, there's a feedback summary as well that'll be included as an appendix that talks about those events over the summer, the beginning of the summer. So the plan, you've seen this before at some point, especially some of you who have been on all the committees. But the way it's structured is that we try to break it into these chapters that roughly correlate to the community vision statement. And so one difference between this time, you're seeing it now, and the last time we came to the board, is that we actually broke it apart a little bit more, that we had some feedback that we wanted this chapter to be first, or it made sense to water and environment to be together, and have this be separate. And so there, we did break things up into a slightly different format than the last time you saw this plan. And then the newest piece of, the newest piece is this implementation chapter. So we have what the top goals are, which I've talked about, those key themes, housing, water, and connectivity. And then we came up with some key indicators for successful implementation. So what that means is like, you'll know you're doing a good job, or you're like, know you're on track if, you know, this particular key indicator is happening. Another term for that sometimes people use are success measures. And then we talk about how we, you know, if you're compliant with the comprehensive plan. So let's say a project application comes to the door. You know, Marika and her staff are going to be reviewing whether it's compliant with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission, if they need some kind of zoning change or variance, they're going to be assessing whether it's compliant with the comprehensive plan. So we gave some guidance and criteria around how to do that piece of the work. Because without that, sometimes what's happened in the past, and I've seen this in a lot of other communities, people just cherry pick the parts of the plan that they like. And usually plans are high-level enough that you can find something that supports your case. And then other people, the public or staff or whoever, can also find evidence in the plan that goes against the application. And so we tried to, tried to help that situation by giving some implementation guidance. And then in the appendix, we have all those existing conditions memos I mentioned and the engagement summaries. So if you need to, if you ever want to go back and see what the survey results were or see what people said at different events, you can do that. So this is how it ties back to the collective vision statement. So we took the collective vision statement, and we, you know, created it in a stylized version, and we took those key bolded statements, those bolded phrases, and those basically correlate to different key ideas or key chapter elements of the plan. So again, these were, these are key outcome areas, so that includes the different subject matters. We have outcome areas in chapters around environment, water, economic vitality, infrastructure, and the community. And then the land use map, which also went, underwent many revisions. And we're going to continue to work on it because we're going to do a three-mile plan after this. You're not, you're not done seeing me. We worked, we had some really good feedback from the Planning Commission. They wanted to spend a little extra time with this. And we made some key changes, especially where the mixed-use parts were. We added some, and then also we changed, I don't know what you call that, that like, can you put your cursor on the hashed corner in between? Yeah, there, we changed that from residential to mixed-use. And then we also changed some of the definitions of residential, basically saying like which residential areas it was desirable to have some commercial uses in, you know, small-scale commercial uses, and which residential areas it was less desirable to have commercial uses in. So those are kind of the main changes since the last round of edits. And then for tracking purposes, this is not the pretty part of the plan, but for tracking purposes, we basically have every single recommendation in a table. And I think this will actually be really helpful for budget planning and capital improvement planning and, you know, yearly workflow planning of saying, okay, you know, this is going to be our big priority for the year. These are the things that it tackles. It touches this, this, and this topic. And so this will, this will be more kind of a reference tool to help, help you work more in the short term, short and medium term, pick items off of that list to focus on in your yearly strategic planning. Again, we talked a little bit about the implementation chapter. The other thing that we did is we tried to combine it with the filtering questions that you already use to make decisions, which I love those. I've actually passed those around to a couple different town and city managers and other planning departments, and they also think they're very cool, so thank you. town and city managers and other planning departments, and they also think they're very cool. So thank you for that resource. But I think we wanted to really show how this can be worked, how can those can be used together. So you have this comprehensive plan, you know, implementation guidance, but you also have this filtering questions tool, which you're already using for decision making. And I think together, those can be really used as a really rigorous litmus test about whether, you know, decisions you're making proactively about policies to implement or reactively, you know, when applications come in the door. I think that those two tools are going to really help you have the right conversations when making decisions. I kind of pretty much already said all that stuff. So the next steps is to have our adoption discussion tonight. We will make, we have to do some accessibility checks to comply with the new Colorado accessible document law and do all of that legwork so that when it's posted online, colorblind people can read it and folks that need a screen reader with vision impairment can have it read to them accurately. So we'll do all of that. And then we're going to continue working on the, for the next three months on a three mile plan update. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I think the real task today is for you to discuss amongst yourselves whether you're ready to adopt, or if there's any key conditions of approval that you want to add before you adopt. But thank you. It's been so fun working on this project, especially just living up the road. You know, BB feels like my second home, especially in the months of April and November. So it's been a joy to, to work with you all and, and your community.
Great. Comments from people and also from the steering committee, if you all want to make any comments about the process or a product. Yes, sir?
Oops. I'm new to the community. I've been here about a year and a half. My name is Jeff Zekel. And my previous life, I was elected to city council. I came from a community about 60,000. It doesn't make me better, but it just, everybody has their own challenges, no matter what size the community is. But I applied, I was selected. It was a broad, I think representative of all kinds of people from library to, you know, the airport. And I just think we did a good job of a lot of diversity coming together. And so anyway, I just wanted to thank you guys, excuse me, for the opportunity. And I hope you all pass it. Thank you.
So do you have any comments?
Sure. Darkened our door here. I actually, it was a pleasure to be on the steering committee. We have trustee Mike on it. Gina regretted before she, she left, left us to become commissioner. And I just appreciate the committee, the planning and zoning team, the planning office, just Joel, Marika and our team. I just think, and I know the trustees have spent quite a bit of time with them also. I just thought, I really, community engagement is something that I have done professionally, and I think that the process here was expanded to my liking. I really felt like it was a good effort that if you didn't know there was a comprehensive planning process in our community, probably weren't paying attention because we, I mean, this team was everywhere. And I just feel like, as Jeff said, there was a robust discussion on all of these, all of these issues and what's come about since then has really refined it to a great, a great point. So congrats to the team in the town.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you for your work on this, your volunteers. Maggie, do you have anything you'd like to say?
The process was awesome. Really, all the accolades to planning, to Gabby and your team. When we first started this, it was, I think I even came in. Right? Because it was getting adopted and approved through the process.
And from step one, public engagement has been really, really, really. So thank you for listening, that that was important to us as a town, that we get as many comments from as many places as we could. And we're hearing it from steering committee. And like you mentioned, Gabby, I had some friends that were like, I didn't even know that was a thing. So we got the word out there. And hopefully when we do this again in 10 years, 20 years, we see that grow even more so because they were introduced this time around. So it's really, really good process overall. And watching each of the drafts evolve and grow and change, really you see the feedback in it. So thank you for doing that. It's been really a fun process to be a part of. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, when I saw the packet, it was 531. Well, Marika is ready for me to stop sending comments. And I think it's a really good product.
It is. There was one particular thing that I just want to bring to light. I'm reading the comp plan, this final draft. Again, a lot of the updates that were discussed made it in, and the ones that didn't have valid reasons not to. And I think that there is one thing that we should just highlight a little bit more. We talk a lot about our history and being really proud of that, as I very much am. And I would just like to see a way for us to incorporate connectivity between Turner Farm and the museum. That's really where we find a lot of our historical stock, let's call it, within housing. And again, the path of that original Buena Vista, right? So we've got the quaint downtown going to Pleasant Street, which is great. But then it drops to, in the flume, it drops to lowest intensity housing beyond Pleasant to rodeo. And I think that we may be shooting ourselves a little bit in the foot in the future with that. And I don't know the easiest way to incorporate it in other than potentially expanding the medium intensity just along that one block from, or that one strip from Pleasant to rodeo, just that front facing block, not
Like the first row?
Just that first.
Okay.
And, and the reason that, and I started off thinking maybe we expand, expand the quaint downtown. Because that also brings historical protection, because that's part of the definition of quaint downtown. And the housing doesn't really address it. So although right now there's a lot of residences in that spot, there's only one business between Pleasant and rodeo, but then there's also Turner Farm, which is kind of a business. And so A, first and foremost, safe connecting sidewalks on both sides of the street. And that's mentioned, it could be derived a few different ways in a few of the chapters. And but also being able to kind of protect that, those historic buildings along the way. Because currently it's owned residential R1, and the, the description of adding, you know, commercial may be appropriate was great, but didn't cover
Okay.
the lowest intensity.
Okay.
And so that
Do you want to mention, like a narrative mention about that historic route?
I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, if it gets in there, that it's important that we have that connection, that we keep that historic, but the biggest piece of that is walkability from Turner Farm to the museum, Turner Farm to River Park, right? Because we have a lot of short-term rentals out there. We have Vista Quartz, the only business out there, their hotel, we see people walking back and forth. And so having a safe sidewalk from that end, I think is really the biggest push, in addition to wanting to maintain some of that small town feel and charm that you have when you come in, you know? If we were to lose a house to a natural disaster, then we don't know.
Right.
It's residential. So there, there isn't any protection for that. So I don't know the easiest way to
I think just to weaken out that as a condition of approval. I have two edits that came in via email. Well, one was email, one is just something I heard through the grapevine, and I thought it'd be worth, they're very similar. So there was this, you're not telling me what the correct name of the project, there's like a countywide sustainability resiliency planning effort that's happening that I actually didn't know much about. And we did talk about that topic, we didn't talk about that exact planning effort. So I think there should mention some kind of collaboration or, you know, acknowledgement of whenever that's finished, like seeing what those policies or those recommendations are. And then there's a project that I don't think he's even started yet, but I heard about it from another consultant, is that Chape County was awarded a huge Safe Streets For All grant. It's like a big federal grant. I don't know if you guys heard about this? No? Well, I heard about it like last week. And that's going to help with the connectivity piece. And in the grant language, I think it includes some specific work. So I think the exact things, the places we highlighted in this plan can directly inform that Safe Streets For All grant, but it's a little, it's a lot more of a data-driven product. So I think they're going to be able to see crash data, and they're able to see some of those unsafe pedestrian crop beacon intersections. And they basically create a list of like all of the places that they want to improve. And then those places that are in the official plan, then you are eligible for implementation funding in the future. So I think we're well on our way to like getting the right process for some future grant funding for some of those connectivity issues that were raised. So I just want there to be like a sentence around integrating the connectivity recommendations with future, you know, federal, state, county opportunities for transportation planning, because that's happening, that's about to happen, about to start happening. So those were like the two kind of planning collaboration edits that I had on my list.
Do you, does it feel, does it feel reasonable to ask that for the future boards and the future developers that West Main kind of lives in that historic protection somehow, some way?
Yeah, I agree with you on that. And I think there's more commercial out there because there's serendipity and
Well, that's all before. So uptick from the River Park all the way to Pleasant is, and the future land use map is listed as supporting a vibrant quaint downtown. So that all falls into that, which is great. So first thought was like, well, let's just expand that all the way to rodeo. But that's not necessarily the intention either. So I don't think that would ever be a good, you know, downtown. But somehow to protect the historical look and feel, and most importantly, yes, because history, but also kids walking to school, families walking to the park, it helps create a safer transition to get to Highway 24 before the sidewalk. So in whatever way that I think to just give that intention to future boards and future projects that are looking at this, that that's something that I personally think is important.
I, I agree that it would be a definite benefit to the kids living out there to have a sidewalk to walk to school on, separates the bike traffic and would put the people walking further off of the road. I think the road is wide enough out there. And it could be a good, a good safety issue. And we do not have that many people around that need the ADA accessible. But if you're in a wheelchair, a sidewalk is so much nicer than asphalt. I, I mean, it, it isn't just for historic, which I think is very important, but it would add safety to our community too. And I honestly believe that we need more attention on West Main. And as our town grows, I do think we will see more businesses on West Main. There will always be residential.
And there should always. Absolutely. And that's, that was the thought of that medium intensity because it still allows residential to be the primary use, but a little bit of flexibility.
Thank you.
There were, there are a few little editorials from the mayor too. I hope there's a motion to approve, you know, conditions with these edits that should be included too. They're, they're minor things.
Okay.
Go through them.
Nothing super substantial.
No acknowledgements.
Okay, okay.
I, I have a few comments that I brought up the last time you all were in here, so I'll try one more time. I'm on page 213 in the packet where we're talking about water and environment under action by D. Collaborate with federal agencies and other partners to proactively address and mitigate wildfire risk. I really think that should say wildfire and post wildfire risks. In 2020.
Flooding after the wildfire.
Yeah. In 2020, we had our three largest fires of Colorado history and there was more loss of life after from the post-fire risk than from the fires. So I, I think it's really important that we capture that. It's kind of minor, but
But major.
And then in action item 5E, it says consider pursuing a wildfire-ready watershed grant. And just want to point out that that's a that's a pre-fire preparedness for post-fire hazards grant. It's not a wildfire risk grant.
So change the last couple of words to address wildfire preparedness.
I would say wildfire-ready watershed grant for Cottonwood Creek area to address wildfire and post wildfire risks. Again, same language. Turns out that I administrate that grant program.
Okay, great. Yeah, well, if you're the expert, we are, we will defer. Those things like great, great tweaks.
Sorry for the emotion in my voice. I always get a little worked up when I think about what happens after fires because it's very preventable.
Well, as there's a fire happening in your county right now, so. Well, I think our, our lack of inclusion on those was just an oversight, given the, the amount of comments. It certainly was not a decision to set.
Yeah, I think that was called me. I brought it up during the meeting, but I should have followed up with a written comment on that, so.
Appreciate the follow. Yeah, thank you.
I don't think we need to go over my comments. Anybody else have comments? Seems like we're really close to adopting this. Do you have something else, Maggie?
Only other comments apply to updates to the comprehensive plan, the collective vision statement and the future land use map. And so just, and I have a few page notes and numbers. I think it's like, you know, conference, the collective vision statement is updated every year, but it doesn't say by who. So just
Okay.
basic question of like, oh, well, who is doing that?
Right.
And same with the future land use map of like what a process would be, when that would be looked at, who would address it.
Okay.
This is the same vein of thinking of questions people may ask.
Okay. Marika, do you feel like you'd be ready to approve the document after these changes are made?
Yes.
Okay. Then is there a motion to adopt the comprehensive plan with the changes to be made?
Um, let's
You take it in a second.
Making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have Sturman hike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations. Let's like to keep our meeting tomorrow briefly so that we can just make sure we have those edits.
Certainly you can make it, but you'll keep it.
Yeah, I just at least 15, 20 minutes so we can make sure we have those edits. Okay. Great. Well, I will be home before 10 o'clock this night. Lucky me. So, thank you so much.
All good. All right. So now we're going to have a public hearing in regard to short-term rental. And I'd like to go ahead and call that meeting to order. And we will have a presentation from Joel, I think, about short-term rentals.
That's right. I'm here in the back row showing.
Makes me nervous. Lakers in the back.
So this is, there are two parts of this. The first one is an ordinance, which will be a public hearing. So I don't have slides for this, but it'll be after the presentation, I'll put up the public comment, if there is public comment. And then the second part is really just discussion. And after the first part, if you guys are like, I can't handle any more short-term rental for now, we can kick it to another meeting. This first one, ordinance number nine, which read a man sections, chapter six, this was on the heels of that work session that we had July 22nd. So there are a couple of parts to it. One is trying to distill really what the majority voice was during that work session into here's during that work session into here's some succinct code changes. And then there were a couple of other kind of additional comments that I threw in there as potentials for y'all to think about. So we'll walk through those. This is um, primarily, it will, in, in this information too, also brought to the board or to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is not part of the UDC, but it is affecting planning and zoning. And so we brought it forward just to gather their input. And generally, there wasn't um, I mean, everyone, I guess the, the main comment was there's a preference to stick with a percentage rather than a number because of kind of the impression of it being sort of a moratorium. Um, with that said, uh, just to go through, recall the, the different types of um, categories that we use for uh, short term rental licenses, which was the focus of the July twenty second discussion. Um, there's out of county and those have a cap presently at six percent. There are one hundred and nineteen licenses. Um, there's six on the waiting list. In county, out of, out of county, this is entities as well. And these are definitions that have been there since the creation of the the license. So uh, in county, they're capped at three percent. There are fifty nine allowed or nineteen being used. Primary residences, which includes ADUs. They do not have a cap. And there are fifty nine issued licenses. Additionally, buildings in NU MS are allowed licenses up to three licenses per building. And there is no cap, but you do need a special use permit. There are currently four, four licenses issued for those. And there are also three quote unquote hotels on Main Street. And then buildings in South Main are also, um, they have short term rentals up to three per building. There's no cap. There's well, there's no special use permit required. Um, there are forty six licenses. It's about fifty percent of the residential units in the PUD. I say about because it's uh, actually very difficult to count. But we can talk about that. So that's fifty percent of those. We're not proposing any changes here presented in NU MS and South Main. Um, but you did direct staff really to look at the numeric cap of one hundred and nineteen licenses um, for out of county and then nineteen or a little more, I think is what we said. And, and following the planning zoning, we, we presented it as thirty in county licenses. You also said, hey, let's take a look at the definition of total residential housing stock. And so we redefined it a little bit to say total definable, short term rental, residential housing stock. And we excluded um, the residential units in South Main and the ones that are deed restricted. If you so um, this, so this evening, I'll get into that definition and the number here, just, just in a little bit, but um, the request is take a look and see, hey, is this the definition that we're looking for? Um, let's take a look at the, the numeric caps as presented. Um, is that what we want to do or not? And after that, we have a couple of other different options. So, so first with the definitions and the, and the numeric housing stock. So when we take out the South Main residences and the deed restrictions, and there's a question of well, what would the resultant number be if it would maintain its six percent? So if we um, did that and added, what is it, two hundred and seventeen, Mika? Is that two hundred and seventeen units? For this coming year, it would be, uh, and this is we, we, we would have to really count granularly to understand the exact number, but it would essentially be the next year, it would be about a hundred and nineteen licenses. It would take a couple. So um, yeah, it would, if, if we maintain that percentage, change the definition, it would be about a hundred and nineteen next year. But then when you have like the crossing and other projects come through, that and same relatively speaking with the in county. Anyway, so um, that's, those are the, the, that's the nuts and bolts of what we had discussed. Definition, under nine thirty uh, in county, Chaffey County licenses, one hundred and nineteen non-residents of Chaffey County. And then there are a couple of other cleanup that would be required and we changed that. Now, there were two other pieces that were discussed to, at varying degrees, and I bring them forward and you guys, it was not like a consensus from the board, hey, let's do these at all. These are just things that were, were brought up. One was restricting them within the R one zoning district itself. And so there's some language that's presented, no new out of county licenses may be issued. No new out of county licenses may be issued to properties in the R one zoning district, so we could have renewals. But none, no new ones. That's one option. And there's some potential code language, um, with a potential amendment that would be desired. That's option A, option B. There was some, I guess this came from planning and zoning. Yeah, let's have um, properties have to be owned for a period of two years before you can get a short term rental license. And so that language is also added. License may be issued to non-resident Chaffey County after the property has been under the same ownership for at least two years. And so that's an option there. We would have to, we might have to think a little bit. Paul and I were talking about this a little bit about, well, what if you're on a waiting list and you've been on a waiting list for one year and are you kicked down for an additional year until your property, you know, you own the property for another year? So there's, we'd have to probably visit that a little bit as far as implementation, but that's option. That option is there as well. And then option C, both of those combined, if you wanted to do that. So. So again, this ordinance, hey, we approve it as presented definitions thirty one nineteen, you can change it back, keep it as percentages and just change the definitions, which case we can delete um, some of those letters and I can help you make that motion if you want. Um, or you can add option A, option B, option C. Different various pathways. So with that, that's all I have to say in the little staff presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the trustees? For Joel?
Um, is this a permanent change? Or are we only just putting this cap on with the intention of adjusting it?
The, the, the way this is written is, this is permanent, it will be written until the code would be changed again. Which should happen through the same public process.
I'd like to suggest that if we do go with a number like one nineteen, I think that we should add the six who are on the waiting list at this point to make it one twenty five.
I respectfully disagree. I think the properties on the waitlist are exactly why I would like to see the cap at than one nineteen. You know, these are, it's one of the apartments down the street. It's for residential housing neighborhoods, you know, our ones in our neighborhood, Cindy. You know, I, I really appreciate seeing the purchase date and the application date. These are some of the most affordable housing units in town that were purchased by out of county people who want to turn them into Airbnbs immediately. And to be completely frank, I am not accountable to out of towners who made investment choices and the risk with that. I'm accountable to people in this community who are struggling to find a place to live. And I think like this is a perfect example of why I think we need to cap it. You know, if they're on the waiting list, that's their choice. Most of them will only be on the waiting list for a month or two. I don't feel any accountability.
Yeah, five out of six of them, you can see.
Yeah.
Bought their house and applied for the permit. Right away.
Yeah, and five out of six of them have been on the waiting list for, you know, three months. Uh, one of them has been on the waiting list for a couple of years, but generally I would support option C. I think this is really well drafted. I think this is really smart. Uh, we can always revisit the cap. I think that was Andrew's intention was putting a straight cap on right now so that we can have time to figure out if we want to do a percentage cap and what that would look like. But I think the definitional change for residential housing stock makes sense. I think it's worth trying what we can. And I think no more R one two-year ownership, you know, and expanding the options for permits from in-county ownership, doubling them essentially means we're not actually restricting that many more short term rentals. We're just restricting it for people who are playing monopoly with our housing stock. So I see what you're saying. I wish these people well. And if they have to sell these houses back to locals, that is the point for me.
So, so.
If, if these folks decide that a short term rental ownership doesn't make sense, they get, they can't own this property without using it as a short term rental and they have to sell it, that's kind of my goal.
Comments on those two different positions or ideas?
Well, there's no guarantee that they're going to sell them back to locals at all.
Totally.
And I think that's the thing that I've been arguing about is that this isn't guaranteeing any housing. There's a, you know, I think, I'm not against it. The only thing that I am really for is that two-year cap, everything else I think is okay. I think having a two-year wait until that, I would like to add more numbers for in county. Instead of just capping it at what it's at now. Um, I think keeping it at one nineteen is fine. And the R one thing, it's only would be, you're not allowed to put STR in R one if you aren't out of county. Correct. I think that's fine. Yeah. I don't know, I probably, what's the other cap for in county at right now? Nineteen?
Yeah, so that could easily be like thirty, I would think.
Yeah, the cap proposed is thirty and it's currently at nineteen with no waitlist. So the cap currently is fifty four.
I didn't read all the little things. So the cap proposed is thirty for out of county? Okay, that's fine.
Yes, there are fifty nine allowed right now. There's nineteen being used. The proposed cap is thirty instead of fifty nine or three percent. So it's doubling essentially the amount.
That's, that's good.
So PNC prefers the uh, percent approach versus the number versus.
Uh, there was uh, not um, th- there were three, maybe four PNC members there and one or two of them voiced that.
So not a strong opinion.
I, I like the percent approach. I like the two-year waiting list. I spent a little time doing some research because this is outside of my field of expertise. Uh, the Chaffey Housing Authority didn't give me an opinion, but they gave me a, a lot of information to read through. I, I know that we have specific data about what, what's affordable housing, you know, where these applications are now, but I just, I came to the conclusion after reading all of this that if we will, if you're trying to solve an affordable housing issue, there are much bigger things to focus on than STRs. And, you know, I took some of the public comments seriously that I read related to this. And I read through everything you provided, Joel. I, I came to the conclusion that I think the existing percentages are good. Um, but I do like the idea of, of the two-year waiting list. So I think that could keep some houses on market that, you know, that might deter people from, from coming in kind of flippantly.
Yeah, I think, I think if keeping the percentage and allowing pushing that to your limit would knock five of those off immediately. I mean, for two years.
How would you feel about keeping it one nineteen now? And then using the next few months as we have time to adjust or think about the cap? I think that was the the goal that Andrew proposed was like, let's cap it at the current number. So we have time to figure out the math on like what cap we might want to see. I don't necessarily agree with you, but I do think that like there is, there's, we should discuss it more, right? And I think this creates space for that without making this like the permanent solution. Do you know what I'm saying? It buys us some space.
I agree with, I absolutely agree with that. I can see the benefit of percentages over a total stock. But we're also facing adding a bunch of total stock over the next two years. And so those percentages were based off of the licenses that were current when this was put into place. So it's basically saying we don't want to take anything from anybody, but in setting it up that way, we've also allowed ourselves to get into this situation of now we're adding more stock in the next two years than we have in the last ten. So I agree with Mika that definitely we should continue to look at percentages, but not base it off of what's currently here or what was there at the time. But what we want our community to see, because it's not like, although I think there's the hope that it will help with affordable housing. For me, it's more containing our community and retaining that, right? And not losing it. So I would even go as far as saying percentages for each neighborhood. Right? That's what I, I think would be an ideal solution, but that takes time to figure out. And because we do have so much stock coming online, I think it's really important. I agree with the two-year wait because it does keep those people that are just coming in to run a business. So there's, short term rentals are a business that are not paying business taxes. So it lessens that. And for me, the, the biggest change was the definition and that we added in the deed restriction because that shouldn't be a part of our total stock. So thank you for that. That's really helpful. And but in the, then looking at that with our total stock that's coming online. So I agree. I think percentages are an important thing to look at. And I think it's also important that we clarify that we're not looking to tax anything, that we're not looking to limit anything, but that we're looking to adjust the values that were put into place four or five years ago. And so I would, I would agree with the two-year before allowing, I think it would definitely take more on the backend of, of research and that we're not changing the definitions of the groups, I think is another important clarifying thing to say. Although I do agree with Mika that right now, and I think it was potentially also Andrew's intention is to just take stock of the stock that's coming online. I think the best way to go about it in this moment is to put that numeric cap on it for the time being until we can do some of that additional research and see how we maintain our community feel and that small town charm that was at the top of the values in our comp plan.
That's what I wrote, right? And to be very clear, we're not capping the number of short term rentals.
Right.
We're capping the number of short term rentals out of county and to your.
Don't we, don't we essentially achieve that if we take out South Main and the
For now.
mixed use?
For now, but not once crossings comes online.
That's not part of the two hundred.
No, no. Right.
Yeah.
If it weren't with like such large development, I think I would be right on the same page with you, Chris, but it's that fear of impending, like I don't want to see a brand new neighborhood go up that then turns into ninety percent short term rentals.
Or pushes short term rentals into.
Or pushes short term rentals into existing neighborhoods.
But it won't if it's six percent, the hundred units, it'd be six.
Yeah, but I think when those six people become your neighbors, it's a huge bummer. You know, have short term rentals pop up in contiguous neighborhoods. I guess this is a more philosophical question, but I, I somewhat agree that this is not the best way to create affordable housing. It is one of our only levers to pull as this town where we cannot impact lodging taxes. We have not been able to raise money for short term rentals, or I mean for affordable housing. This is one of the only levers we can pull is the supply versus demand. But I guess I also don't understand for those of you who are supportive of a percent, why, why you would rather see more short term rentals? would rather see more short-term rentals as the community grows than in, owned by out-of-towners than just owned by people who live here? Like, what do you feel accountable to there?
I'm, uh, thinking about unintended consequences associated with, for the local economy. Um, and there's some of the research that I read pointed towards that could be an outcome of it. Um, so I thought of that. But you know, as this is written now, I don't think we're communicating to our town citizens that we're just temporarily thinking about this and then coming back with another plan. What I think we're communicating to them is we're changing the code.
That's fair. Is there a way that we could include the intention within the update? The intention that this is not a forever, this is not intended to be a forever change, but something that will be under review, like.
Well, I think if we're, if it's a temporary thing, then we make it a temporary thing and then we come back to it and change it. But, you know, the way I see it is like, we're just saying there's a cut right now. And there's, there's no plan to change it in the near future, so. You know, if you're, I'm not saying I'm for short-term rentals. We worked super hard to, to make this policy. I think adjusting it in certain ways, like adding this two-year, um, ownership is a huge thing. And a lever that we can pull to help adjust this, this, uh, uh, the need, but also to make sure it's, it's supporting our community and our businesses. Um, you know, if you talk to any business in town, they're not against short-term rentals because there isn't enough lodging here. So it's.
I would be curious if we've ever talked to any of our hotels in town to see what their vacancy rates are throughout, because I hear that a lot. But yet I, I've talked to several people that work at hotels and they say, well, we've had vacancies at least one or two rooms, so I, I would be curious the data behind that statement.
And again, we're not limiting short-term rentals at all. There is no cap for short-term rentals owned by people who operate in this town or who live here. There's also basically no cap for who live in the county and own a short-term rental here. I just want to be really clear that we're not capping the number of short-term rental licenses. It's essentially unlimited.
I just have a hard time that we're, I feel like, I feel like what you're saying is that you're doing this for housing where there's nothing that's going to equate that this is going to create any housing for anyone.
I mean, I don't think that's true. I do this. This is my full-time job, is like working on short-term rental legislation.
They're saying there's a hundred percent guarantee.
No, not at all. But I'm saying there's no reason not to. And like the hypothetical problem of five years from now, there's not enough short-term rentals to support our tourism economy. Versus right now, we know a hundred percent of housing on the market is out of reach for working families. We have a real problem that I'm weighing more heavily than our hypothetical tourism issue in the future that we can adjust to. But if that market exists in the future, I, I imagine people will buy those units who live here and turn them into short-term rentals or will create a hotel. We've seen lots of businesses do that. So I, I'm kind of addressing a, I'm not saying it's going to create affordable housing, but I do think there is a lot of science to show that limiting short-term rentals forces those housing prices down and pushes long-term rentals back on the market where short-term rentals are not an option.
That also completely negates the conversation about maintaining the community that we all come to love here, right? People don't move up here just for the nature, just because it's beautiful, but because we've crafted this amazing group of individuals here. And to lose that would go against most of the feedback from the comprehensive plan that we just got. I don't want to let them steal the throne. Right, I want to know my neighbors. I want to know that if something happens, I can go knock on the door. And, and so that to me, that, that one piece of, well, it won't give us affordable housing completely negates the, the other comments that have been brought up as well.
Okay, I'd like to recognize trustee Swisher.
Um, I think that part of the answer to this is in the comp plan. And, um, our sense of community, um, small-town community feel. Um, I think that when, especially in the R one, you know your neighbors. Um. I had Mrs. Broom on the corner and Mrs. Foreman across the street for years. You watched out for them. If they did not step outside, you checked on them. Um, you don't have that with short-term rentals. Um, you don't have seniors aren't allowed to age in their home as well if they don't have family in this community that they have neighbors that care about them. If that neighbor moves away and we have a short-term rental, they've lost a lot of their connection. We don't have good transportation for our elderly people or the people that are unable to drive. And I think that they rely a lot on their neighbors and we have said that it is important to take care of our se- senior commi- community. I think, I don't think we're doing it when we do this. Um, in a neighborhood, you have senior citizens down to babies. You're losing a lot of social interaction, youth. Because chances are grandparents live six states away. Um, they aren't exposed to those people. I, this is what, a neighborhood is what community is about. Neighborhoods are close and your town consists of a lot of them. I was in favor of option C. Um, and I do feel that as an employer, um, that shorts, short-term rentals are great, except you've got to have a place for employees to live. There will come a point in town, the time that people are not going to commute to Buena Vista two hours a day. They're not going to live two hours away to come to Buena Vista and work in the service industry. They're not. Then you go to the extreme. You cannot provide the services that you need to for the people that are coming here. And where do they go if, if we can't provide those services? And if you're short on employees, you can only do so much a day. And that you're all, give it your best. But if you're, if we continue to go that way and you don't have the working class come in here and take care of the jobs that others don't. You don't have that service to offer to people. And you will lose tourists because they will quit coming here because we cannot take care of them. And, I, so I was with option C.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything that you could add about any sorts of, uh, safety or or crime or anything that's more or less likely in a neighborhood of neighbors versus one that's fifty percent short-term rentals?
Sure, I appreciate you asking and I really appreciate the thought that goes into this. You know, it's an important issue. I really advocate for all of the things that have been said about keeping the, the sense of community, knowing your neighbors. On the police side of things, um, sometimes with short-term rentals, um, you know, there's been a move in policing sometimes as there's been recruitment and hiring issues where some agencies have used, um, a forty-eight hour schedule and they'll bring in officers from other areas to work forty-eight hours straight and then they go back. And one of the problems that some chiefs have mentioned about that is those officers aren't connected to the community. And they don't have that investment as officers that live there. So I think that's kind of, um, mirrors this issue a little bit, that dynamic. From what we've seen with the police department is sometimes people in S T Rs, they're, they're maybe not the best stewards of some of the, the laws in our town. Um, I've been frustrated sometimes to be reminded that, you know, this is where our kids go to school. Uh, this is where, you know, our, our families, like at the prison, they have to get up in the morning and go to work. And sometimes there's houses that there's some partying and music and late-night things and some um, alcohol use and things like that that doesn't take into account that there's still people that live and work here and have to get up in the morning. Um, and we've had some cases, we had one where the family came into town and they came in, their daughter got extorted with some, um, um, illicit images. She was a juvenile and it was a pretty big case that it's like, wow, this is a lot of work for the little Buena Vista Police Department. They came in, the crime happened, then they left and it was weeks' worth of work. So you do see things like that sometimes and it's, uh, a lot to think about and consider.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments?
There are a lot of comments too.
Okay. I'm also supportive of amendment C. That's what I'm hoping.
Hey, there's the public out there. Would any of you like to make any comments or ask any questions? Okay.
Hi, you guys know me as a reporter. Um, I'm obviously commenting as a resident and not as a representative of Arch Valley Voice. Um, but I just wanted to say I am one of those Buena Vista residents, uh, that is struggling to find an affordable home. Um, I make too much to, uh, qualify for eighty percent AMI and not enough to afford a hundred percent AMI. So I'm sort of stuck in a weird limbo. Um, and I just wanted to say that I one hundred percent, I, I agree with Mika here. Um, doing this doesn't guarantee that the homes are sold to locals or that there will be more available homes, uh, but expanding the number of short-term rentals, uh, will guarantee that those six will be short-term rentals and not long-term housing. So I, I think it's better to, to go with this plan, um, and, and stick with limiting the amount, especially with out-of-towners. Um, if it was up to me, there'd be no out-of-town short-term rentals, but that's why I'm not on the town council. Thank you.
Want to speak, Mark?
Yeah. If you guys don't mind, real quick, um, I like the restrictions of removing the deed-restricted houses. And South Main, I think that's reasonable to do. I like having the percentage because then the town grows and inventory grows and so then my business can grow and other people's businesses grow. We employ about twenty-nine cleaning staff. We employ handyman. We employ all that stuff. As you guys restrict these, we're going to have less and less work for these people who actually live here, who are affording houses here. And on Mika's point, three of those on the waitlist are properties that we're going to be managing in the future and not one of them are going to be sold to somebody local because they're million-dollar-plus houses. So the comment of that is inappropriate because I don't think most locals here that are struggling to afford housing here are going to buy those houses on Arkansas Street that are one-point-two, one-point-three million. And correct me if I'm wrong.
What percentage of the S T R market would you say your company has?
A small percentage. We have about twenty-six properties.
You have twenty-six properties?
Yes. Yeah, so.
So you could find some way to expand your business into some of the existing S T Rs?
We could, yeah, yeah. And we do, we, we talk to people all the time, but I mean, I just think with tourism and all that stuff and um, it's good to give people, like you saw the numbers that I presented from Salida, they dropped a ton of money in their sales tax because of the taxes they included into their short-term level. So I'm all for restrictions. I think restrictions are great. I think if you guys want to put the cap in right now and then reevaluate a percentage, I think that's a great idea, but I think throwing a cap on it period and not letting more houses become short-term rentals will hurt the future of Buena Vista. And I get it. I know the community. I was born and raised here. So you still get that community feel and that's why I agree with the restrictions. Because if you, even if you went to a five percent, instead of six percent, I think you would still get that community feel. But a lot of the people that we manage the houses for move to this community when they're ready to retire or, um, actually some of them, I think nine of them are actually people that live in this community now. So it's, it's people who invest into the community, not just people who want to buy a house and make a ton of money on it because realistically, they're breaking even. They're not making thousands of dollars like everybody thinks they are. They're breaking even, even it's a house for them to come up and enjoy the community. And then they cover some costs by short-term renting. So the point that they never come here or never spend time in this community is not true either. So, any question?
Thank you.
I didn't plan to speak on this topic, but as one of the newest homeowners in Buena Vista and you dropped a significant amount of your life savings into, uh, Ross, uh, a dream home. And then to learn your neighbor, to turn your neighbor into a short-term rental is pretty discouraging. And so, uh, I, I, I ask you to consider that too, that, you know, those residents that are here that are full-time, uh, I, I agree with Mika. Uh, she's speaking from a local homeowner's perspective that, uh, the non-stop traffic in and out every weekend of someone different living next to you. Uh, I don't think it matters if you're in a, uh, two-hundred-thousand-dollar house or a million-dollar house. The story's a sin. And so I ask you to consider that. Thank you.
More comments from the public?
Nobody online, has their hand raised?
Okay, our cause public comment. Um, trustees, do you want to take any action? Um.
I'm, I move to adopt ordinance number nine with amendment C.
I will second.
Okay, so we have Rosenor and Swisher.
Um, I, I'd like to have further comment if possible.
That'd be fine. Is there further discussion?
Um, I'm just curious. But I think we've all agreed that we need to come back and discuss a more permanent type of plan for this, staying head nodding. So do we have some kind of idea of a timeline on that? And what I'm getting at here is, what's the timing of all of these C O's for the crossings? Versus what's our timeline for coming up with a more permanent plan for S T Rs? Because again, I am very concerned about we're communicating with adopting this because we're not communicating the R, that this is a temporary move.
I have to agree with that. I, I think this is step one in a multi-step process and if there is a way that we can include that would be really important to the messaging that this is not intended as a forever change, but a step one in reevaluating as we do have an extraordinarily large amount of, of housing units coming on stock. So I would agree that to put something in there, I, I do like option C as well.
Because we have a whereas, the Board of Trustees intends return to this provision by twenty-twenty-seven or something like, we could add a whereas line that's a intention, right, or some kind?
Joel, can we, is that possible?
Yeah, certainly that, uh, whereas clauses state that intention.
I don't know what I would say, but is there a date by which you would feel comfortable saying like, we're, we intend to address this by whichever date? Within a year?
I would think like a few months because I feel like, I, you know, I agree with trustee Sturm is that, I feel like you know, that this isn't communicating that we're, we're, you know, a problem that seems like we're reflexing and shutting it off. And I want, you know, for the record to show, I'm not against short-term rentals and I'm not for short-term rentals. I'm against moving ahead with something where I don't feel like there's a clear outcome and, uh, and clear, you know, uh, clear outcome at the end of this. So that's, you know, pushing it down the road is something that I feel like we need to make a good decision right now or push it for like a few months or something like that, but pushing it a year or more, I feel.
I would like to see it pushed to about August of next year. So that should get most of our major developments up. We will know what our numbers are going to be and you would know how much. And you would know how much of an increase it would be because we have a lot that's coming online. And to do it for one year, I do not feel is unreasonable because we've left it open to everybody in Chaffee County. We are just limiting. We're not cutting back. We're not raising taxes. We're not, we're not doing a lot that's negative. But let's wait and see what kind of stock that we have coming on and what's that's gonna do. And I think just doing it for a couple of months, you're not going to get all the information you need.
We're also gonna have to go through budget soon. So I, I agree. I think a whereas the Board of Trustees intends to revisit these provisions by, by Sep- by September first, 2026. I think that's flagging that like we're giving ourselves a year to figure it out, but it doesn't have to take a year, I think.
Exactly. Yes.
Yeah.
And that also leads into Joel's comment from earlier that with the, within the next year, adding the deed-restricted and South Main keeps our stock about the same. So even if we have the same percentage, those two definitions for the next year keeps that stock about the same. So it gives us that one year of stock being called a numeric value, but is matching what the percentage value would have been. Let's take that year where they match and figure out what we can do going forward. Would that help with your hesitations?
It does. But I, I still don't see the reason why, why we have to do it if, if that change of definitions keeps the number the same.
Because we don't have that much stock coming in the next year. It's the year after that, but the stock increase happens exponentially.
Right. So if we're gonna figure out a more permanent solution in the next year, then we're pretty much status quo. You know, nothing's gonna change regardless of, if we do the definition change.
Yeah.
In option C, we're not adding anything to R1. That's important to me. And the two-year ownership. Yeah.
Excuse me, can I ask a couple of points of clarification, something to think about as the staff that licenses? Couple of things. Your two-year ownership, does that apply townwide? Are you including South Main? Are they excluded? Is that all short-term rentals? We needed to find that really clear.
Yeah.
Where your two, two-year ownership is required. Also, go ahead.
Just a comment on that. It is specific to the out-of-county category.
Okay, that's what we need to include in the ordinance, that it's specific to out-of-county because that's gonna come up. Also, your R1, we need to specify it's gonna be out-of-county?
Yep.
Okay. So if I'm out-of-county, I can buy an R2. Residential zone.
Or R3.
Or R3, or MUMS or South.
So anywhere, any other residential area in town except R1.
Which may just be a block over.
Time, you just can't make that.
And so for the two-year question, Paula, I would assume that South Main and MUMS wouldn't apply because they're in the, no, South Main PUD, excuse me, not MUMS. Just the South Main wouldn't apply to the two-year out-of-county because they're within the restricted, non-restricted bucket, I believe. Am I understanding that right, Joel?
Yeah, they have. I'm just looking for their, their exact language, but shall not be subject to numerical limitations on STRs. F. And that would be some more pieces of paper. That would be F. So they wouldn't be subject to to that within the F.
I mean, I think the whereas with an intention to revisit in a year is a good compromise. I think we're somewhat losing sight of the fact that a handful of the trustees, me included, I think Andrew included, based on his current old comments. I, I don't wanna see any out-of-town county, short-term rental permits, zero. So to me, this is, this feels like a good compromise to cap it at what it currently is at and revisit it in terms of percentage. I think I am against short-term rentals in this community, especially owned by people who don't live here. So I think this is a good compromise based on what I'm hearing from both sides about, you know, intention to revisit it and hold the line for where we are right now with the number developments that we're seeing.
We'll know what average numbers of what the crossing will add in 2027. So over this next year, we can look at these percentages or numerical values or whatever we deem to be the best option going forward and set it at that point with those numbers in mind of the future stock coming up.
We also have a bunch of non-development development happening right now. A bunch of houses being built all over town. COs over north of the, north of Maine. You know, there's houses being built all over. So I think the housing stock is gonna increase regardless of when the crossing actually comes online. Like there's just a lot of building happening in town.
So back to Chris's question though, is it important to switch away from this percent? If we're redefining, if we're taking out South Main and, and deed-restricted properties?
I see what you're saying. I, I, I see what you're saying. For this change in definition, I would be, I would be okay compromising to leave it at a percentage as long as that whereas is still within a year from now. Because we know that that percentage and numeric value aren't gonna change in the next year. I could totally undersee that, like understand that point and say, as long as we go with option C for the two-year out-of-county requirement and no more in R1 for out-of-county, then, then for the next year, we could, as long as there's the whereas, it will be revisited within one year. I think that would make sense because we know those numbers aren't really gonna change with the other definitions.
I just don't see the why, right? The tourism economy is not gonna be affected by a lack of short-term rentals in the next twelve months. And so I think if we're gonna do it, let's do it. And, you know, I don't, I always think it hurts. I think it will, I think the unknown percentage cap changes will hurt us or could, but it doesn't hurt to limit them.
And why not just say we're, we're just putting a cap? You know, now it's, we're just, it seems kind of arbitrary. It's just like, we're gonna.
I don't think it's arbitrary based on the number of existing units.
What our planning director says.
I just had a quick point of clarification and I, should I have, I should have talked to Joel about this before tonight. But when we were talking about restricting short-term rentals in the R1, just from my planning to help, there's the R1 Old Town. And I just wanna understand if the R1 prohibiting short-term rentals exist only in the R1, purely R1? Or if we're talking about anywhere that's R1, including R1 with the Old Town overlay? Just for some context, the Boulders is R1 Old Town. You know, not the homes that are immediately south of us here, but kind of the blocks behind that are R1 Old Town. And then as we move west from McPhelony Park, a lot of that is R1 Old Town. So I just wanna understand, just for like planning sake, if we're talking about pure R1 or if we're also including R1 Old Town.
And, and if we are including Old Town, we'll just have to make an amendment to specify R1 and R1 OT.
Yeah. My intention would be R1 and R1 OT. Cindy, I know this is important to you. How do you feel about that?
I think it should include both. We're not taking away from what is already there. I know in some of the Old Town that is downtown, that that's kind of I'll watch my words, tourists, you know, that it, it puts them in the downtown action. To me, if you're, that wouldn't. You still have some community sense there, but in the Old Town, you're more apt to have a short-term rental over a bunch of neighbors. I don't know. I, I would like to see it in both, but I'm I'm willing to give a little if I have, if I have to.
For the most part, would we, how, how the rest of you feel about OT versus overlay as well? I mean, R1 or R1 OT?
I feel like when we keep adding amendments and things, I feel like this is, is getting, is giving me the impression that we need to discuss this more before we vote on it. So, you know, I think this feels kind of rushed to me. So, you know, there's things I definitely agree. I agree with a lot of these things. I just don't feel comfortable moving forward this, with this without some more discussion and public input. And, you know, I think, I think there's a lot of great things in it, but I also feel like we're trying to like figure it out right now. We're doing this and we're fixing that. And I just wanna make sure, you know, when I make a decision, I want it to feel like we checked every box. We're not trying to like put out fire.
Well, we have a, we have a program in place right now, which we can leave in place. But you, you know, we can either, we can adopt an ordinance or we can deny any ordinance or we can table something to a date certain or, or just some into the future. So you could, you could make a motion if you'd like.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Already have a motion.
Oh, we do. Come on on the floor. And which was for C?
Ordinance C with the amendment of R1 plus R1 OT would be the motion I'm making. And the whereas clause, that the Board of Trustees intends to revisit these provisions by September one, 2026. So that's my, my motion.
And I had seconded it.
Okay.
Mayor, on, on the last comment by trustee Row, at the very least tonight, I think it would be important for us to solidify redefining our total housing stock. And I think that was a really big piece that came up is we have a lot of affordable housing units that are not just apartments coming online. Apartments are already excluded. So I think at the bare minimum, if we were to table the discussion, that that would be an important thing for us to address tonight.
Okay, are we ready to vote on Mika's motion? I think we should do a roll call, but Paula?
Trustee Hike?
Yes.
Trustee Rosenor?
Yes.
Trustee Row?
No.
Trustee Stern?
No.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay. So we have amendment C in place. And the language is that we'll revisit this by September. First meeting in September twenty-six.
I'll keep a placeholder on my kind of look ahead schedule, just so nobody loses track of it basically. Currently, this spreadsheet all include STR discussion by nine-one, twenty-twenty-six unless otherwise requested by the Board of Trustees. So. That'll keep you guys aware since you read my report all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. Okay. Right? I close that public, I close that public. Okay. Now I'd like to open a new public hearing.
Uh, no public, it's just a discussion.
Oh, I thought you said it was public hearing.
Later it is, the.
Not where we are?
No, not quite.
Okay, yeah, budget.
Yeah, so this is, this is just a, uh, let's not dig too deep into this unless you guys really want to, but that's a pretty, pretty small topic there. This is, um, let me just kind of walk you through some of the questions that you go through. Planning's mine. As you read the document, maybe you thought, wow, this is really confusing. Or I'm not sure if I understand these definitions, perhaps. This, th- these are things that come up fairly regularly when we're talking about well, short-term rental licenses and then what is, is or is not an ADU in different zone districts and different uses as well. And so I guess instead of going through and getting, you know, I wrote this as sort of this yes, no, let's kind of bring these back. Do you wanna bring these back? Maybe, maybe just let us know that we want these to come back or yeah, don't worry about it. Or you can listen to me and then just say, have a good night, Joel. So there's, there's a couple of different things here. One, there, there's this idea of three short-term rentals in South Main and MUMS. That, that was first developed, it was really had to do with some projects that were coming online. And we're like, well, let's, let's make sure we're gonna have three. And what that has done is if you have three short-term rentals in a building, we're not really sure. Well, is that a small family, which is three units? Or is it a duplex with an ADU? Or is it a hotel? Is it a motel? I mean, hotel motel, I guess is the same, but like what is, what is the use classification? And then what is, when do, when does the fire department come in? And if it's hotel, they come and inspect it. Commercial, it's taxed as commercial. But if it's a duplex with an ADU and all three are rented, it's short-term rental. Well, it's a residential. It's taxed as residential and the fire department doesn't have any oversight on that. And so it gets to this weird sort of land of what is, how are we reviewing these as planning department? How, whenever we bring people in and how are we treating this short-term rental hotel? Note that South Main does have a definition of hotel room. And they have an allotment of so many hotel rooms, one-hundred-and-fifty hotel rooms within the PUD excluding short-term rentals. So if things are short-term rented, but they should be hotels, well, like all of a sudden we have this dispersed hotel situation. Hold on, then there were chapters. And there are quite a few properties. We come up and discuss all the time. We're like, is that, is that a hotel? I, I don't know. Well, it's taxed commercial, but then wait, is not taxed. It's very confusing for all of us. So we would like, we have one proposal in here just to say, instead of, you can have three short-term rentals for billing, well, you can only have the two. If you can only have the two, three units in there, which you're allowed, duplex and ADU, two of them are short-term rented and one is long-term rented. Okay, cool. If you need all three short-term rented, call it a hotel. Cool. That's taxed commercial and it's operated and you're within that one-hundred-and-fifty-room hotel limit. So that's one idea. You have any?
I got a little lost.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to imagine a building, what it would look like to have three short-term rental licenses in a building. I don't see, I only see the outside of these. So can you tell me what that actually looks like? So I imagine it's not three rooms in a house. It's like.
Top of the city, top of the banking.
Yeah.
Although those are hotels technically.
Yeah. So what is that?
It's one of the corner, when you drive down in South Main and you get to the stop sign, there's a blue building on your right if you're going here. South Main, that blue building, three separate, three separate units within that building.
So the like one on the corner here where there's the like, it's like a mini hotel. And then it has the tiny home and then a residential home. What's the mini hotel? Is that the hotel or is that short-term?
Commercial hotel.
So we're talking about something that looks like a house, that has three separate entrances. It's like three combined short-term rental permits. Okay.
Yeah.
I wanna go inside one of these houses.
So that's one, one item we'd like to, we're kind of clearing it up is to say, hey, you know, it's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Another item is, gets into this, is this a, a distinguished hotel? And there are some properties that. And there are some properties that have short term rental licenses, but you book them through the hotel. And clearly everything operates through the, through the hotel. And so it's a hotel. It's not a hotel, it's short term rental license. So, just trying to think of, um, and so these are not classified as hotel rooms according to how many there are. They're often in mixed use structures. And it, it, it creates just this, you know, difficulty again with like fire department and feel like that ten, uh, those two, uh, that project we, we granted a, um, a revocable license agreement with that on that trail. Both of those are operated by a hotel, but they have short term rental licenses. What are they? So there's one idea of, um, yeah, if you're short term rented, period of thirty days or less, you're managed by a hotel motel or public lodging affiliate. You can't be short term, you have short term rental license operated.
Because if you're a short term rental, you're paying residential taxes. Okay. Yeah, they should be paying commercial taxes in my perspective. Yeah, bring it back.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. I noticed that let the apartments above Black Borough were being taken care of by housekeeping. And I was like, oh, that's interesting. So it's kind of what you're talking about. Exactly what you're talking about.
What is a public, what's the lasting? If it's managed by a hotel motel, what's a public lodging affiliate?
Oh, and, and this again, this is not, this is just like language everything back and so, um, it, it's sort of it's catch all of like.
Like a digital marketplace?
Well, like you, oh, we're not a hotel. Try to get, get somebody's loophole. But we can play with that.
No, I think that's great. I think that's something I see a lot. There's people, community struggling with like, what is a digital marketplace? What is a public lodging affiliate? I think getting those words right is hard and we should bring that back and figure that out. Yeah.
All right. So you guys generally thumbs up. Another one is, um, this inference of an A D U. Right, right now there's this, um, there's some properties where you have, the inference of an A D U is pretty broad and we want to be able to have um, these accessory dwelling units where it's a mother in law's cabin, suite or whatever it is. But sometimes it's hard to know, well, is this really actually just a duplex with an A D U? Cause everything looks the same. It's about the same size, et cetera. Is it really accessory or is it a triplex? And I think we'd like to visit, I, we don't really have suggestions other than, um, uh, A D Us shall be permitted with single family dwellings and on two family dwellings on separated self divided lots so that actually it's a duplex, but you're on two different lots and one, you can have an A D U on that. Another option is detaching. You can have it with a duplex, but it has to be detached. So it is clear that this is an accessory dwelling unit. Just at least applying with some of this language and not necessarily this exact language, but if you guys would be open for us to bring back some, some changes as we go through what is or is not an A D U. Probably would be helpful. America chime in if you're like, no.
Yes. My, my comment on that one, Joel, and I'm not looking for an answer right now, but something to think about is, does that distinction between the two hurt? Are there unintended consequences for our local community by changing that?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to give it some careful thought for sure.
I should know the answer to this, but it's escaping me. A D U's cannot be used as short term rentals. Is that correct? Do I have that right in my mind or? They can be used as short term rentals. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, there are places where like, um, there's one property I know where you go through the front entrance and the ground floor is an A D U. It's eight hundred and fifty square feet. And then there's a second entrance and you go upstairs and it's the main house, you know? And so it kind of is accessory, but it's also the main entrance. And there are quite a few little properties like that, which is, it's like, what is this?
I, I would be really careful and I think it's worth a discussion for sure to clarify and make sure that there are no unintended consequences to those in our local community that have one of those interesting properties that you walk in the main entrance and that could be rented out because you could go live around the backer. So I think yes, but bring it back, but let's be really careful about it.
Yeah. Well, when you can rent all those, like if it's primary, you can rent. It, it's really has it just to be with the classification of what is and it's not. And then when you get into getting into that triplex versus a duplex with an A D U kind of classification. That's really the, just.
Chris, did you have something?
No, I think we, we captured it all. Thanks, Joel.
And, and the last thing is just, it, it's, um, has really, it's less about making clear for staff, but I felt it prudent to bring it up because this is, comes from community concerns specifically. With the, um, kind of the evolving communities, I think community, the new urbanism toward more of a, less of, less of a year round place and more of a seasonal or short term rental. It's, 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 I don't mean seasonal because they have lots of people around, but less of a community feel from some folk. And so it has to do with, you know, there's some statistics and things in there. But some people have said, eh, let's, uh, you know, have South Main and M U M S operate just like the other places. Or let's do a cap of some form within South Main specifically. So I just want to, i- i- if these are things that you guys want to explore or, or not, um, and maybe that two to three, excuse me, three licenses to two licenses is enough for now.
I am interested in bringing this back. Number four, I actually didn't know this was an option. I thought this was like a set upon agreement in the development with South Main that like they're allowed to have essentially unlimited S T Rs. This is an option. I, I do think it's worth exploring since that essentially is an entire development that nobody lives in. I don't know. What do you think about that, Devin?
Wish bring that back. That'd be good. Looking to more.
Well, I have just a quick question on clarification. As it stands right now, none of our S T R licenses are guaranteed to pass from one owner to the next. Is that correct?
None.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was something that we talked about. Thank you. I do think we should bring this.
Well, those are the answer to my questions. Thank you for your time this evening. Until after the fun stick again.
You'll reappear.
I want to take a break for five minutes.
I apologize.
We love you fellow.
Kind of wake up.
There you go.
Hold on.
A little bit longer.
Gavel.
More gavel.
More gavel.
Yeah, more gaveling.
You need a face?
Laughing more gaveling. All right, let's go. Um, this is gonna be Philip's part of the meeting. He's gonna lead us through the introduction to the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
Hopefully on our lighter topic. You don't have to prove anything. Just listen and ask questions and yeah, so no, thank you, Mayor and Trustees. This is, this is the introduction to the 2016 budget. Page five oh four of your packet. Put a few slides together here and so yeah, I'll speak for a few minutes and then yeah, feel free to ask any questions you may have. We'll talk about next steps in this process. So first slide I have on page five oh five is just a simple timeline that we've put together every year. Just shows you where we're at in this process. Uh, intro to the, intro to the board leading up to this staff has been working for about a month, month and a half um, on a draft operating and capital and personnel budget. So we have a decent idea of where things uh, will probably stand and how things will look when we introduce the actual draft budget to you um, in October. Uh, so, but this is meant to be high level, just give you an idea of what assumptions we're working under, uh, what to expect as next steps uh, and so on. So yeah, going into the next slide, uh, you may recognize this. Hopefully you recognize some of the individual bullets here, but this is a look at the 2025 Board of Trustees Strategic Goals and Key Outcome Areas. So a lot of our main projects, uh, both capital and operating changes are identified here. And this is, this is really just to remind you what we're working on this year. That definitely shapes a bit of going into next year, especially some carryover projects, uh, things like that. But um, this is, this is what uh, we use as a guide to inform uh, what we prioritize in the budget. Uh, so important, important discussions that we have in the springtime with the board, but also ongoing and to be uh, lead into the uh, budget process. Next slide, uh, wanted to just give you a little bit of a feel for what we're looking at in terms of our, our assumptions and, and uh, any uh, big changes, operating changes for next year. So first of all, we're, we still, we still strive for a structurally balanced budget. That means our, our expenses are offset by our revenues. We, we don't ever wanna look at um, covering any of our operating from our fund balance. So we, we, that's a, something we look at across all the funds, but um, it, it's, it's one of the bigger challenges in the general, uh, general fund. Uh, but that's, that's our rule of thumb. So what we bring to you will be structurally balanced. Um, and then we will be looking at, okay, then what didn't fit? And then what trade offs may we uh, consider? Um, as we go through that process. There will be some carryover projects that will not be completed this year. Um, though this has been a big year of water projects, parks, some big capital present, uh, pocket wave. So I'm pretty excited to finally get those off the books, cuz it is, it's a bit of a challenge to track that from year to year, but uh, more than likely we'll have a few carryovers. So we'll highlight those to you and explain, as these were budgeted in twenty five, they will show up in twenty six. Um, but they'll basically be spinning out of fund balance at that point because they're carrying over. Uh, inflation, um, I think, yeah, it's, it's eased a bit, although it's, it's, it's still fluctuating. I think when I, when I took this snapshot, when we began the uh, pay plan analysis, it was about two point two. That's bumping up, I think, a bit to more like two point five. So um, it's, it's moving around a bit from month to month, um, as many of you all uh, realize from the news these days. Um, but that, what we do with that is that it informs our pay plan. So we use that as a cost of living adjustment. Um, and then we add merit on top of that to create an overall pay plan. Uh, so that's what we're looking at there. Um, we do continue to face cost increases in our life, in our insurance, our utilities, things like that, contracted services. So um, yeah, well, anticipate, we'll see that when we talk to you and introduce the budget detail. Uh, on the pay plan, you, you can see there currently what we're thinking. Um, but quite a bit of discussion and efforts going into uh, evaluating that for market competitiveness. So uh, we may be looking at some market based adjustments as well in some key areas. So yeah, a lot of it going into that. Give you an idea, one of the important aspects of, of the budget that comes up um, during the public hearings is the community grant allocation. So right now, we are uh, looking at roughly sixty thousand. It's gonna be allocated towards that out of public support. Um, that's again, there's a, there's a policy that sets that based on projected revenue, sales tax revenues. Uh, so that's what that looks like. And then what we're attempting to do is keep our fund transfers consistent with twenty twenty five. So you can see, we have several inter-fund transfers, uh, three hundred thousand from general fund to capital, uh, one hundred thousand from marijuana to the capital fund, uh, forty thousand from conservation trust fund to the capital fund, and then one hundred sixty thousand from general fund to airport. So we're, those are consistent, pretty consistent with what we have in this year's budget. We're trying to hold those steady and see how everything balances between like general fund and airport uh, as an example. So that's, that's the idea there. Uh, revenue projections for next year, we are sticking with a one percent increase in sales taxes. So you can, you can see, we've been talking about this, but we're still on a very uh, limited uh, slow growth. Um, sometimes no growth, sometimes flat. Um, so we feel like a one percent increase over this year is still a, a conservative, but realistic uh, revenue uh, growth projection. Uh, other revenue changes, our property tax is, is very limited uh, based on taper limits and other limits. Uh, so we have, uh, you know, knowing that we've had new construction and new uh, a lot of property development, uh, we'll hit basically our five percent cap growth on that uh, very quickly. And then that'll, we'll stop there. Uh, on property tax, um, interest rates, we're uh, we're, we're pretty careful, but that's an important part of our revenue. Um, so we, we are looking at anticipating between a quarter and a half percent decrease from where we're at now. So those, that's how we're estimating interest. And uh, oh yeah, and then our emergency reserve. So what we'll have in place is our, our forty two percent restricted in the uh, general fund and then um, the three month reserve in the airport and water funds. Uh, the next two charts, just to kinda reiterate where we're at on the sales tax. Um, the first one is the, the standard chart that you see in this monthly sales tax reports. And you, you can see some months where things are, or things are kinda flat. You can see uh, especially summer, a couple of summer months, you'll see where there, there looks like there continues to be an incline. So it's, it's a bit sporadic. Um, the next slide, um, Trustee Rice and I had a discussion. He was curious like, well, what is, what is like uh, an inflation factor due to that chart? That's a really good question. So if you take the Colorado CPI and you apply that uh, starting in twenty twenty five and work backwards, um, this chart will show you that really, uh, if you factor in inflation, our sales tax really isn't growing all that much, if at all, in some, in some cases. So just kinda gives you that feel like, yeah, our expenses will continue to go up. Our sales taxes are uh, not going up at the same rate. So budgeting is a challenge. So. Um, next slide. There was a question this spring about, or in recent months about, hey, can you give us a little more explanation about enterprise funds? So this would be our airport and, and our water fund. So I, I tried to summarize what an enterprise fund and, and an enterprise fund is versus our, our general fund here. And um, I'm not gonna go through this all in detail. I think we talked a bit about this. Uh, but the intent of an enterprise funded is, is it should be operating like a business. It should be generating enough revenue to cover its expenses for the most part. So it doesn't mean that we can't transfer money into these funds from the general fund. It just means that we have to be mindful of a few limitations. And the main one being if we pass, if we have greater than ten percent of revenue for that fund coming from local and state grants, um, we lose our enterprise status for that year, for that next year. So um, so that has some repercussions in terms of being able to borrow money uh, in that fund. Uh, essentially it starts to act like a general fu- uh, general operating fund. Uh, so water fund, this isn't, I am, in my time here, with, this isn't really a concern in terms of transfer amount and, and grant amount. Um, airport, however, this is an ongoing topic. So it's something we'll be pretty mindful of if and when we consider debt as a strategic plan for funds at the airport. We will need to plan for that so that we make sure that we're not passing those uh, limitations or those, those max uh, revenue grants uh, from other funds. So if you have any questions about enterfa- enterprise funds, please feel free. But uh, that's what that looks like. Budget next steps. So we are continuing uh, all of our operating uh, draft budget is, is pretty well put together. Uh, staff's doing a great job getting capital, projects and items uh, updated. Uh, so things will continue to move uh, ahead there. Uh, the department heads will present at the September twenty third meeting. So you'll hear from each department head a little more in depth about what's going on in their area, what priorities they have, any areas of concern. Um, and hopefully that will give the board a, a feel for, you know, where the priorities lo- uh, are, are from a staff perspective. And then we'll present, the first meeting, October, October fourteenth, we will present the draft budget to the board uh, and the public. And at that time, that's when we'll set the public hearings for the rest of the uh, rest of the year, rest of the process uh, until December eighth, ninth, ninth, and hopefully we'll be adopting at that time. Any questions?
Trustees, questions?
Cindy, it should be an easy question. Going back to employee wages, their increase. Um, continue to evaluate pay plan for market competitiveness. Um, I assume that you would have the, the results of that before the end of budget. So we know what we're, and if there's areas that are way underpaid and we have to compensate for that.
Yes, absolutely. So we have, we have all of that data now, actually. So we'll be, we'll be prepared once the draft budget is presented. It will reflect that and then Brian and I will point out any uniqueness to the pay plan or any changes, or is there something missing that we feel is uh, not meeting that market competitiveness? So yes, we will, we will have that data and we'll know where we're at by the time we get into those conversations.
Okay.
Other questions? Guys good? Thank you.
Said you had a question.
I did, but it's not fully fleshed out yet. So I'm still working on that one.
Reach out to me if you have any one else to copy to, copy to chat.
Right, well, thank you, Philip. We're getting off to a good start. Great.
All right.
Okay, so now um, we're gonna talk about healing centers. Joel, is this you?
It is.
This is the healer.
Yeah.
Healer, chief.
So this, this will be a public hearing too, so.
Public hearing.
Uh, this is an emergency ordinance, uh, temporary moratorium on natural medicine facilities. This is a, something that was put in place by the state, um, I guess last year or so. Um, and um, the, all municipalities are part of this and have to allow um, natural medicine facilities within the municipalities. Municipalities can impose certain time, place and manner restrictions on operations of licensed facilities. Right now, we have nothing on the books that um, has any regulations on what those might be. Um, and I think there are four different types of licenses. Three of them, we, they, they're not even allowed by, as a use in the code according to our use table. Um, and we have to change that so that they are allowed. Anyway, so uh, Jeff is here if, for the legal parts and he can speak more to it. There's a memorandum put forth from, uh, from his office. But the emergency ordinance here would be to impose a temporary moratorium on the acceptance, processing and approval of applications for the establishment of a natural medicine business and the establishment of a natural medicine business on any property within the town. So um, just request six months and maybe more, we might need to extend it, but um, to put, put some rules in place. That's essentially what it is. Um, Jeff, you have good words to uh.
You know, Joel, you, you pretty much covered it all. Um, you know, the, this is a little different than marijuana licensing legislation and that the state basically does almost everything. And the only authority the town really has is sort of zoning hours of operation, some cer- certain signage, um, operating conditions, that kinda stuff. So you, you, you can control where they go into town, how long they can operate, their hours of operation, and a few other things, but it's much more limited than the marijuana licensing scheme. You, you don't review applications and all that kinda stuff. So um, it, it's, it's much more limited, but we have, a number of our clients have drafted uh, ordinances, uh, putting in some distance limitations, some zoning limitations, things like that. And so um, there's a lot to work from uh, for the town, so we're happy to help.
Okay, um, does anybody have questions about the ordinance itself?
Basically, you just wanna put this in place so we can figure out some regulations.
That's exactly it, yeah.
I just have a quick question, if we've had any interested parties within this industry yet?
I don't think anything's come through with a, any kind of license or anything.
But it's, what, the way I'm reading it is this allows us to become in compliance with state law. Cuz currently the way our code is.
Um, it, it does more so, I mean, there's, Jeff could speak more, but uh, I mean, we have to allow these things. Uh, th- these things, meaning the four different types somehow. Um, the one is a, a healing center can be in some places, but yeah, there's no restrictions on hours or signage or those kinds of things. And, and maybe we don't wanna restrict anything, but we don't know yet. So it, it gives us time to do it.
So is the healing center alternate medication, psilocybin, magic mushrooms?
That, that's pretty much it right now, psilocybin.
Is it like the marijuana shops like we allow to in town? Could we, is part of what we do limits the number that can come to town?
I, I think those are the kinds of things we'd have to explore and, and get. Definitely Catherine would really need to advise us on, you know, some options that we can bring.
State law basically prohibits you from banning them. Um, and so there's some questions about whether a numeric limitation is allowed, but um, some of our clients think that that's okay. And so we could talk about that when we work on these regulations.
Okay, um, someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number ten?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have Rowan Swisher. Is there further discussion? Um, then um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, great, the motion passes. Okay, um, now we're gonna go with uh, trustees, staff interaction. I don't think I have, well, I don't think I have anything at the moment. Ellen?
Uh, the only thing I was, I was gonna mention was that I attended the uh, festival and I, I thought as an attendee, it was very well done. I worked at the Pretty Lights Festival and I felt like it was a lot better organized after that festival. So um, and it was also a very interesting, amazing crowd of people. I heard that there was people from sixty different countries there, which was, someone said, was the largest gathering of people from other countries for music in Colorado.
Wow.
So, and you know, from my experience of going to many, many concerts, I felt like the crowd and the people were very, very nice and friendly and they were very respectful of the land. And you know, it was really a great thing to see and a very amazing musical uh, talent that those, those guys have. That's probably not for everybody, but um, I thought it was a good event from my perspective personally. So.
There's four, four guys in the house next to mine, which is an Airbnb. And I thought, oh no, these guys are here for this concert, they're gonna be wild. I went out and talked to them and then um, on the last day, I noticed one of them was outside picking up trash on the street. It was just so nice, you know, he said some, some RV went by and was, you know, didn't tie down his trash.
Yeah. But anyway, they were fun.
Yeah, that's all, I saw a lot of things like that up there. It was really awesome to see, which is not, a lot nicer than some of the bluegrass people I see. I know a lot of bluegrass too.
It wasn't my mother's kinda music.
Maggie?
Um, I just wanted to mention something I saw this morning from Sangre, that they're doing uh, an emergency scenario drill in Northern Chaffey County on Friday. So noticed that and they said that there may be like, let's, I can read it. They'll conduct an emergency scenario drill in Northern Chaffey County. This will be a drill, not an actual emergency incident. You may hear or see multiple emergency responders during this drill, but please do not be alarmed. Um, so it says Friday morning from nine to eleven thirty. So just wanted to share that cuz I work on Main Street and I get lots of questions all day about that kinda stuff, so that's all I got.
I don't have any, no. Chief?
Um, no, I, I came to the meeting because I know there were some questions about ICE being in Chaffey County. So I sent, um, I got an inquiry from uh, some of the media outlets about that. Last week, there was quite a few one day emails. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has questions. Um, I did respond to um, one of the reporters with a lengthy response. with a lengthy response that kind of laid out what some of Colorado laws are and what our authority is or isn't. So, um, I think that's in the packet if you had a piece to.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's this letter that starts out, hey, Grace.
Grace Benson was the.
Oh, it's Grace Benson. Anyway, it was nice that you wrote this because it's, it is very clear.
Yeah, and she did a, a letter or an article that also captured, um, Sheriff Rorick's thoughts and Chief Johnson. Um, I thought was well-written and informative, but if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer that. The other thing, um, you may have seen, um, the Unavista Demons are playing the Salida Spartans. It's a historic rivalry. It's Friday night and Chief Johnson and I have a little wager going that if, uh, the demons win, he has to wear some, um, some demons gear. Um, and then if the Spartans win, I have to wear some Spartans gear. We're probably gonna do a buy each other dinner or something if, uh, whoever the loser is, so.
Should be a fun game, so Friday Night Lights.
Is that here?
That's gonna be here, yep. At Unavista High School, seven o'clock, the game starts. And, um, we've got a lot of, a lot of, uh, um, excited fans from both teams on Facebook and they're both really good football teams, so hopefully it's fun for the community.
Great, well, thank you for all you're doing. So, long summer.
It's been a really long summer. Last week was like really a long week. A lot of cars crashing and some people getting hurt out there, so it's, it's been rough for all the officers and the deputies and we're definitely ready for some cooler weather and a little bit of a slowdown, so.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to call attention to, uh, a letter of support request from the, uh, Chaffey County Visitors Bureau. Um, this is for a Chaffey, or a Colorado tour, uh, tourism office grant. Uh, primarily, I think, um, we've all seen presentations on placere AI and stuff like this. I think this is the appropriate place to house it if it's gonna be done in the county. Um, so, yeah, alright. Get a green light on that or not?
Yeah, um, for me to sign the letter?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, um. Somebody wanna make a motion about that?
I'll make a motion for the letter to be signed.
Okay, second?
A second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Hey, wait, I have a question.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, so, what is it, like a AI visitor bureau? Is that what it?
No, it's more of like data analytics associated with the kind of visitor volumes and spending trends and stuff like that, so. You know, you tend to get com- or questions of like particular event, how much did it actually drive uh, economics in the local market? Uh, we don't have the ability to track that currently. I'm not sure how much information we'll get from it, but it is kind of appealing in that aspect.
All in favor of the motion? Sorry, Devin. Oh, okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Is anyone opposed? Yeah, the motion passes.
I was scared it was like a AI entity that was gonna be like reading people from.
To our town? I think we could do just as successful in advertising with AI. Second one is, uh, product of the joint work session with the school board, um, looking for volunteers as far as and how committees to be on the water committee and then potentially the CMC, uh, facility committee. I know water is some interest to kind of gather that committee and see what we can do there. Uh, Andrew is not here, but he volunteered. I ran it past him.
Or he does volunteer.
I was kind of on ceremony, it was.
And we can have two, so.
Yeah.
And, I wouldn't mind sending it through the CMC building.
Okay. It sounds like water. Uh, I'll give a list. I know they were gonna do similar yesterday. Kinda see where they're at on the CMC. I don't think it's quite as much.
Chris, did you wanna?
Yeah.
Did you something?
You raised money for water, if needed.
Yeah, we can, we can include two, so. I'll send out an email, try to coordinate that initial meeting, so. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, reminder to RSVP if you're attending the CML District thirteen meeting on October eighth. Unavista is hosting.
So you should go.
You should go, probably.
So send me an RSP if, if you're attending or not attending, because I need to register you through CML. So I think our deadline for that is September twenty first, but if you'd like to get it in sooner, that makes everything better. No, because you do have to go on and, you know, I'll register for everybody and submit the payment fee and everything else, so it's.
What's the date of it?
October eighth is the date of the event.
I'll probably go.
Marika, what do you think? Nothing for me? Hello?
I do. Um, so, since I know you looked at the full sales tax report, the full thing, you'll have noticed that we now have sales tax by zone district um, in there, and so big thanks to Carly, Carly's here, and Marika, uh, for their help with, uh, some data on that. So now, on the monthly reports, we'll have it broken down by zone district as well. So, it's, it's interesting to look at. Let's see, county, uh, if you've, uh, seen some of the recent articles, counties discussing lodging tax, potential lodging tax increase. Um, there was a article in Ark Valley Voice summarizing that, so just kind of be paying attention to that conversation and potentially uh, what you think would be the right amount for the municipalities to get as a share of that. Because they're talking about that too. And no, they, they should approach us. They should approach us for some discussion with you all about that, but just be thinking, um, thinking about that, be aware. And then, um, not, not so fully tied to the short-term rental discussion, but inevitably it probably is. Um, valid questions for next November. If, if you all are thinking or if we wanna talk about, uh, tax, any tax questions tied to that. I would recommend that we s- we do that in spring, early spring, to give enough time to go through that and get, you know, legal input and all of that so that it's done well. If, if there is a question. So let's not wait till August and go, hey, let, what about taxing these things? Let's do that earlier.
I was gonna wait till September.
Yeah, you could wait till September and the answer will be no. It's gonna be real easy, so.
There you go.
Um, kids are back at school. I saw Frazier at drop-off and he was very friendly. It was great to see him there and he told me he was on his way to the high school. So, um, yeah, nice to have all the kids wandering around. Um, that's it for me.
Chris?
Bears are back out, y'all. And they're hitting South Sangre really hard. So if there's any information that we could provide, that I can help provide to my neighbors, because I don't wanna push for an ordinance on this yet, but last year I had my neighbors discharging firearms with rubber bullets in them while I was out of town on my property and flares that hit my house. And my poor wife did not know how to deal with that. Um, and had I been home, I would have asked my neighbors not to discharge firearms on my property. Uh, so I just think that this town needs a reeducation on how to deal with the bears, because they're getting really aggressive on South Sangre right now.
Well, they end up getting destroyed, the, the bears do, because the people are stupid.
Bearware trainings or presence in town?
There has been, and it's actually something that was added to our code that specifically talks about it. Uh, nuisance tied to not securing your trash can. So there's code.
Yeah, right.
In recent years, yeah, some of us were involved with that, so. Yeah, I know it's there and I know we've done some bearware in the past that we could re.
I tracked the socials on this. It's real active right now, so maybe just, I could drop some of that ordinance language, paraphrase it and remind folks about it, because I don't know what's worse, people aren't securing their garbage cans or the overreaction with both. Yeah, it's.
Because if people are all securing their garbage, then it wouldn't be a problem.
It's still a problem. The bears still, I mean, I watch them pull fish out of McPhelo meat and it's too much work, so they just walk around and eat it.
But I don't, honestly, and I don't know if you've ever interacted with the CPW folks on that, but they do issue rubber bullets to folks in town. I'm not saying that that's necessarily a bad thing, but it just, I was a little taken aback that.
The, um, it might be worth if you consider that having a CPW like, uh, Mr. Madler come and talk. Um, because the, the trash cans, um, unless you get a very expensive bear-proof trash can, they're gonna get in, that they get into cars, that they get into houses. At my house, one actually opened the car door, like lifted it.
They smart.
Yeah, and we're locking doors at my house right now, which is like very un-BV.
Now, you should lock your doors.
We're locking doors, car doors, house doors, garage doors, everything.
At, at my house, um, I live outside of town, but I, I put bear boards and, I mean, I've done everything and they still manage. Like they'll step over the board, reach over a fence and lift the trash can out and it's a challenge. And I've been told in the past that CPW says that they do respond to pain and they'll remember that and then they'll move on from that area. So that's maybe the rubber bullet context. Um, but I think we do have an ordinance that prohibits discharge firearms in town. Um, but there's other things I've seen that you can buy things that if the lid comes off your trash can, it shoots up like pepper, which you remember you put that. Anything that can cause a bear discomfort, so, so it moves along, so. Bears are a challenge though. And with the apple farm? They like apples.
Well, this, this year's been rough on forage, natural forage because of the drought, so they're they're really aggressive right now. So, anyway, that's what I got.
Thank you. I thought of one other thing. I went to the opening of the Grove Preschool and it's beautiful. You know, it's just really a wonderful facility that they managed to put together in eight months. Beautiful place. Joel?
I have one thing.
Yes?
Is why not one more? In twenty twenty-four, House Bill three sixty-two was approved, which allows for gray water to be, um, used within a low municipality. Um, and this, it's different this time around because previously you had to opt in to allow gray water, but now you have to opt out of, of this, meaning that, um, effective January first, we will need to allow in-home recycling of gray water from laundry showers, baths and bathroom sinks, et cetera, which we can regulate, of course, and figure out the rules for that, unless we wanna opt out. And, uh, meaning you can't use your gray water. So I just wanna float it out before we jump in and create a bunch of code about how to use gray water effectively in purple piping and all these sorts of things. Um, if you guys are like, no, we don't want gray water, let's just opt out. And if you want gray water, we'll work on a code for it. But if you don't want gray water, I'd rather not work on a big code and then bring it back.
So, like, for like, for watering or something?
Yeah, so I take a shower, there's a, that, that water from a shower, not from toilet, but like shower sinks and stuff can be recycled um, in a variety of different ways. Put on your lawn or put in your apple trees or whatever it might be.
It's one of the big ideas in our cut plan, to look at gray water use in new development, any possible. Not knowing much about water, definitely not the expert in the room, feels like using gray water could help ease the strain that we have on that, that natural resource. So I would be a big fan of, of seeing it. Yeah.
I have a question because of my lack of knowledge. Okay, so it would require a current home to be modified with plumbing to be able to do that?
Uh, it would, current homes would have to do that. Most of the time it would be applicable to new homes, although where, we could put financial incentives to help. Grand Junction has that to help current homes do that, which is a budget implication.
Okay, so when I take a shower, do the dishes, do the whatever, I assume that all my water is going to the sanitation district. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, how will the sanitation do some of their processing without that gray water?
Um, well, I mean, I think, uh, if we can get into some of that if we wanna look at that. I think you would have to have like a mass scale of gray water recycling for that to make a difference.
Right.
Um, I mean, if you have, yeah, I mean, it would, it probably would save, would help them out a little bit, because it wouldn't have as much water going.
The process, but it wouldn't be like it would affect some of the solid processing, does it require so much moisture to process solid?
Well, it would be, I mean, any.
More solid stuff.
Totally would.
I need help.
There's different like.
He'd be fine.
We would probably talk to them, though. We would talk to San Tichan and Chaffey County Building.
Alright, we'll, we'll, um, we'll work on something that.
Thank you.
Don't work too hard. Never do. Um, I was gonna ask Dean if he gave the guys a slide of points for the game.
Give them spread or something?
That's a good deal for you, man.
Everything I'm hearing is Chief Johnson's gonna be buying me dinners. Put that on Facebook too.
Um, I, I got a couple things. Um, one, um, yeah, um, job, street department's been busy, so, kind of something kinda, kinda shiny, streets, trails, moonstriding, so. Job went taller for getting that done. Um, and, um, uh, you should, you guys should see the, uh, um, final draft for the water conservation coming on September first.
Bike path is great.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Someone saw me on it. Someone saw me on it the other.
You're fast.
Oh, yeah.
Any bike has to go under the posted speed limit, right?
Yeah.
Because I see he bikes just zooming up west me.
Yeah, bikes are different.
Devin, did you pick up speed when you stashed on? Like, did you wanna look cool?
Well, I was, I was at the end of the bike path, so I couldn't really pick up speed. It was my normal bike.
Right, um, anything else from anyone? Jeff? You have anything?
Uh, no, I don't have anything. Uh, you know, I, I think I'm not gonna be participating in that because we have a conflict, because we also represent the city of Pueblo. Um, and so like, if you want us to participate in that, we could get a waiver, I think. We have to do it formally to comply with ethics rules, so. But, but other than that issue, um, we actually do special counsel work for Pueblo. We're not their actual city attorney. Um, but, um, I've known, nothing else. You guys are doing a great job. I don't have anything to add to these meetings. I'm trying to participate whenever I can, but you got, you covered everything. So, uh, no, nothing this time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So, um, we're going to go into executive session. Um, generally, we say goodbye to the people who aren't staying for it. Yeah.
Leave until after you make a motion.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
A second. No, we have to close the regular meeting. Say the whole spill for us.
Damn it.
Wording.
It's still here to make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah. Jeff, I'm searching for the wording.
Well, it's 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 in your, um, page of your agenda.
I found it. Oh, okay, at the end of the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. So um, this is an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to Federal Advice Statute Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E concerning the potential acquisition of water storage. Um, so we are going to um, go into this executive session, but um, and leave now. And we have a bunch of.
Should we get a a motion, a motion on that and a second and a full vote?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, now we're going into the executive session and we will have what Brian and the trustees, um, and I don't think you're part of it, Marika.
Philip.
If you want.
Philip is.
Philip, after you. Marika, you're welcome to stay. I'll be here. All of the, the press doesn't need to.
No. Any action taken afterwards?
Bushing to adjourn. Be safe.
Yeah. All right, Carly. Have a nice night.
And Jeff can go so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna log off too.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff.
Bye, Jeff.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. It'll be Brian, Marika, Philip, Joel, and the board, of course.
And Sean? No, okay.
You guys got this. Stripping. Trash. Memorial.
Max. Morning.
There we go.
He's probably waiting on us.